Okay, okay. I would like to welcome everyone here today in our viewing audience for the July 22th Board of Meeting Board of Adjustments for the City of Davenport. Your participation in city government is appreciated and welcome. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off and may interfere with the room's electronics. My name is Jim Reistroffer, Chairman. To my left is Bridget Boyd Carlson. To my immediate or far right is Dan Darlin, and to my right is Angela Leibert. And staff is Laura Burnerly and Mallory Horton. You see, I saved the last. I'm gonna call you Mr. Matt. Because I know I'm not the name of the law. Thanks, Matt. We're tech, right?
We're tech.
Okay. Good. The zoning Board of Adjustment is a five-member judiciary board established by state law. We are appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council, to serve without compensation for a five-year term. The Board meets twice a month to hear appeals involving hardships from strip application of current zoning laws. We also grant special uses and rules on administrative appeals. Are there any corrections of minutes from the last meeting? Sorry? None? Can I get a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pass. Well, I see we got one thing on our old business, and I'll read that case. Request of HV 21-03 of Jim and Amy Hoyt at 4710 West 60th Street for a hardship variance to construction approximately 40 by 64 detached garage. Impose 25 60 square feet in the year in the rear yard. Section 17.09.030K of the Davenport municipal code allows detached garage of 1681 square feet. Existing dwelling is 3363 square feet. The proposed garage exceeds the allowable garage area by 879 square feet. Is the applicant here? Okay. Well, I'll call you up when we're ready, okay? Can I have the staff report, please?
Okay. So this is an aerial photo showing the property. It is on the west side of the gravel road. So it's the one with the in-ground pool on the back. Yeah. So here's the subject property. The yellow box represents approximate location. My pointer doesn't work. The yellow box represents the approximate location of where the proposed garage would be. It is adjacent to a private gravel road into the subdivision. It is in the rear lot. The site is zoned R1 single-family, which does allow for 50% of finished living area for a detached structure. The dwelling was constructed in 1995 and then purchased by the applicant in 2014. The property has an existing 1,084-square-foot attached garage, and the proposed accessory detached garage would be located in the northeast of the adjoining driveway. So that's the site plan for you. This is an elevation of the proposed garage. The overhang roofed area is to the west, the southwest part of the proposed structure. Proposed garage would be 2,560 square feet, so 64 by 40. The garage would be about 76% of the dwelling's living area. According to our code, a 1,681-square-foot garage would be allowed without a hardship variance, so it exceeds the code by 879 square feet. As we mentioned, 1,084 square feet of attached garage space is available. When you add that to the proposed garage, it equals 3,644 square feet of garage. That would exist if there was a hardship granted. The gross living area of the facility of the house is 3,363 square feet, so it would exceed the, it would almost exceed, right? It would exceed, it would exceed the living area for that property. And then it calls into question whether or not residential would be the primary use of the property anymore. Here's your notice area. Staff received two phone calls, one on the week of, the second week of June and June 18th. What was discussed was possible business operation out of that business, whether they had legal access to it, and then concerns over increased dust off of that gravel road. So staff's concerns are related to the garage space exceeding the dwelling space. Really, that, in terms of the zoning, that would become the principal use of the property. So storage would be the principal use, which would not be allowed in an R1 district. It might not necessarily be a concern with this applicant, but in the future, potential for illegal use of that building. For home occupation, which you can do certain businesses in residential districts, it strictly prohibits storage of tractor trailers, semi-trucks, or heavy equipment. It also strictly prohibits repair and service of any vehicles for commercial or any kind of machinery. So a building of this scale could lead to potential for those illegal uses to happen at that property in the future. It is not clear whether this property owner would have access rights to the gravel drive. It's not been provided. And then ownership of mowing and turf equipment will be difficult to determine between whether it's for this property or use of the current applicant's business, as he owns a landscaping So the findings. First, the application of the ordinance creating hardship has not been demonstrated. Item two, physical and topographical conditions do not limit use of the site. Item three, unique circumstances have not been established. And then item four, essential character will not be protected. Staff's recommendation is to strongly deny the request as it does not meet any of the approval criteria necessary for a hardship determination. Do you have any questions, staff, if you need them?
I'm sorry.
If you have any questions.
Any board members have any questions for staff?
No.
I got a question, Laura.
Okay.
You know, can you get back to where the telephone calls occurred?
Yes.
If you can. Okay, the two telephone calls, did they give you their names?
I did not speak to them directly. It was Scott.
Okay.
And I do not believe, they are adjacent properties, they received a letter, so they are within a 200-foot area.
Okay. Did they send a letter to you?
No, we have nothing in writing from them. It was just phone calls.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. How do we not know whether they have access to that road?
It's not actually a public right-of-way. It's privately owned.
And not by?
But not by the petitioner.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Applicant, you want to come up and address the Board, present your case?
Mr. Chair, can both of us come up to the podium?
Yeah. You want to give your name and?
Yes. John Carroll, I'm the attorney for the petitioner.
Jimmy Holt, I'm the landowner.
The, if we could, could you bring up, Laura, the, kind of the top view of the site going back? Maybe one more? That's fine. So what the petitioner is primarily intending to do with the use of the proposed facility is to take over the cultivation of the existing cultivated ground that is on the back acre of his property. That is an existing farm use, existing cultivated use over the years. The farm tenant of my client has declined to renew the lease, so my client has decided to take over the cultivation of that existing use for himself and his family. Now, the purpose of the facility, of the garage, is solely for storage of small farm equipment, to farm an acre essentially, and solely for that use. My client, as staff has acknowledged, has identified is the owner of a landscaping company all around town. He has two commercial locations right now where he stores and operates the business. He additionally has a third location on West Locust Street, which is an empty lot. So he has multiple locations to operate his business out of. He certainly will acknowledge this and assert this, but this in no way is for the use of his existing business. It is solely for, you know, recreational farming, I guess, and the intent is to cultivate the hay.
Yeah. If I may?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, yeah, so we're in rural Davenport. We're surrounded by pole barns, we're surrounded by such buildings all the way around us. And we do have an acre and a half, if I can correct it. And it goes from beans to corn to alfalfa, and we're just looking to bring that in-house. We've had a lot of trouble with the farmer renting it, and it's just been a pain point for us, so we thought it'd be, I guess, fun, if you'll say that, to bring it in-house. We have a family of five, and we have a little garden, and we're gonna expand on that big time. So we're gonna do that. We want a building to be able to support that. It's needed to take care of this area, but we are gonna have continued use of what it's currently used for. The idea is to have a building that is sufficient to hold all of this equipment from those different three varieties of agriculture needs. And so that's what we would build this out for. We have, went a little extra on building it for the size of not knowing the exact equipment that we'll need in the future. As far as doing that, we've talked to other farmers in the area, a couple that are surrounding us, because you can see, of equipment that will be needed. So that's why we're doing that, and then we've also put an awning on the outside to have it aesthetically pleasing as well, too.
One of the other things I'd like to point out to the Board is that, right now, as far as the gravel road, this is an association of homes, and the association does maintain that gravel road. The actual ownership of the road, I haven't researched, I certainly can to find that out, but I do know that the association, which Mr. Holt is the president of, maintains the road during the course of the year. So, you know, the ownership, I guess, isn't determinative. We can research that and find that out, but I think as far as the access off of that, it may simply just be an association issue in regard to use.
And if I may, there's actually probably gonna be less dust, because we're not gonna have farmers coming in and out. We're gonna have the equipment on-site and on-hand. We're not gonna be going up and down the gravel road. The reason for the driveway is because you guys, per code, have asked us to put in the driveway. We didn't really want to put in the driveway, but we're gonna go by the code of what we need to do and put in that driveway to have access. And as the President, I have checked with the Board, and we have approved that we can joint that gravel road to that pavement road.
We're happy to provide minutes of the Board, or of the Association Board, to substantiate that as well. One of the other things to note is, in the area, there are many, many other properties that have pole buildings that are as large as a proposed one for my client. They were existing prior to the change in the ordinance, is my understanding of that. So it would not necessarily be out of character, the size would not be out of character with a significant number of the adjoining or adjacent properties to the petitioner's property. So, you know, I guess in conclusion, prior to, you know, receiving your questions, it's not out of character with the neighborhood. The ownership of the gravel road certainly is indeterminate, but certainly the Association controls the maintenance of that, and the Association, we can provide evidence that substantiate the Association is allowing the access off of the gravel road. You know, it's an existing use as far as the farm ground, the acre and a half. The dust issues is gonna be, you know, remediated or mitigated by the fact that the farmer, the tenant farmer is no longer gonna be bringing the equipment in off the gravel road. It'll be actually be right there on-site, and it will continue a longstanding existing use of farm ground in the back acre and a half of the property. So we would request that the Board approve our hardship request as it stands or with conditions that you would propose.
Has any board member got any questions for the applicant?
I actually have a question for Laura, is that? So is the farm area zoned differently than the home area?
No, it is not. It's considered illegal, non-conforming use.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The tenant farmer that you used to have taking care of the property, where was their equipment stored?
That I don't know.
So they brought it?
We moved in in 2014, and he had farmed it. There was a couple different farmers, I think he had farmed it two years prior to that, but don't know me too bad.
So nobody has been doing anything with it?
What's that?
Nobody has been using that as farmland since you bought the property?
No, he had been, but last year he came to us. He does, I don't know if I need any details, but he does a meat market down the farmer's market, too, and he's kind of expanded his business into that, so he's notified us that he doesn't want to farm anymore, or is limiting.
So he would bring his equipment?
He would bring his equipment in, yeah.
Okay.
He'd bring, depending on what agriculture crop it was, he'd either bring a cedar in, and then he'd bring a combine in, and then he'd bring a hay baler, just all the stuff, too, so, yeah.
Okay.
He'd bring all the equipment needed to cultivate that. Like every two years, since 2004, he had done a different crop. Yep.
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions, but can I go to the map? What's this operation here?
That's an equestrian farm. They do farm or help horse training. This is all, if I may, this is all, I mean, this is loaded with horses. He has manure piles out here, takes, I mean, his tractor is going up and down here all the time from his facility as well, too.
I will note that is zoned agricultural.
Okay. So for staff, over here, that's a pole barn?
Yeah.
Do we know what that size is compared to the property? And then same question for up here.
Yeah.
There's another large pole barn. I'm curious what that is compared to the size of the dwelling.
I do not have that information in front of me. I will note that property is built five, 10, or 20 years ago, when the zoning ordinance was different or not grounds for a hardship variance. The need for the variance must be unique to the physical traits of the subject property.
So when we moved in, no matter this matters or not, it was told that a 4,000-square-foot building had been approved prior to us moving in. Now, that doesn't matter, you know, there, but obviously, from an affordability standpoint, we have, we had three kids in those last seven years, kind of growing up, and affordability, we couldn't do it, and we were kind of caught off-guard when in 2019 that we learned that it had changed a little bit, because that was kind of our intent along the way of anyways when we bought the property.
I guess one of the points I'd follow up with staff's last comment is that, because of the fact of the acre and a half that's under cultivation, that is unique to the site. And if the applicant wants to farm the property, which he certainly is lawfully in his right to do so, then the storage of the appropriate equipment needs to be somewhere on the site, presumably, so that would meet one of the hardship requirements, that certainly the site is unique, it's under cultivation, it has been for many, many years, and was last year, up until last year. And now the applicant, the owner of the property, wants to take over the farming of that, and needs an appropriate facility in which to store the equipment necessary to farm his property.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I do. How many pieces of equipment do you think you need to farm an acre, acre and a half?
We've been told, and again, we were working with PK Implement out of DeWitt, we've been told we might need upwards of 12, just depending on like the seeding and different things of that nature. But I'd prefer not to be held to that number, because I don't know officially.
12 including implements.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We did ask for a list of the equipment, and we did not receive potential list of equipment nor a methodology to determine the size.
So you're talking implements, you're talking like you have a tractor, then you'd have a planter, a haybine, or a?
Yeah, just different things.
Four-row picker, or four-row planter, whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not talking about, you know, a 44-foot cultivator or something, right?
And one wouldn't purchase the equipment until, you know, the approval's been allowed. So not, you know, not to be facetious, but tough to give something until we get approval to utilize the property, but I don't think there would be any objection to, if that was a condition to the allowance, the variance, that my client would certainly give a list of equipment.
What's in the center of the property next to the yellow box?
Where, I'm sorry?
What's the structure in the center of?
Next to the yellow?
Next to the yellow.
That's actually a basketball court.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I tell you, West 60th is such a busy road, and there's so much speeding going down it, we only have a front yard for the kiddos as far as hard pavement. We got a seven, a five, and a two-year-old, and we wanted to put something out back there for them to play in, so in a safe manner.
Just as a note to the Board that is built onto what was part of the farmland.
How many doors are on this building proposed?
Two on the, we're facing east, and then one on the side, and then a man door. A small door on the side. And the reason we have the, and the placement that we do is in accordance with the covenants as well, along with the code for the city.
Well, the covenants of the Association, and of course, the zoning code, do not permit commercial use of the property, of the facility that would be placed on the property. So, again, just to reiterate, my client has plenty of other locations in which he operates business and stores his equipment and so forth, so that, we can assert that that's not the intent.
Staff, do we have what would be like standard dimensions of a four-car garage, six-car garage? You know, what would a 40 by 60-some-sized building equate to?
I mean, the most common garage size that we see is a 20 by 24.
Sure. A two-car.
So a two-car garage, so you can extrapolate from that, probably four or five cars.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to give a reference, so I've had a 32-foot deep by 45 wide, and that's four and a half wide and a car and a half deep, so that'd be twice that size.
Any other questions from any board members? I just got a few questions. Mr. Carroll, the 60th, West 60th Street, and I noticed, you know, going up 60th, and I know the dirt road that's up the top of the picture. Is that road like got blacktop on it, or is it all rock?
I can probably answer that better, Chairman. Which one, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, you want to go up and see where your yellow shed is? That road to the right.
So this is asphalt.
Right.
This is gravel all the way around, and this is gravel. That's paved, 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 paved. That driveway is actually leading to a pole barn that's larger than mine.
Is that white concrete that would go into the left? As you go up the end of 60th Street?
Right here?
No, the other.
I don't have my hearing aids there, Chairman.
At the bend, off the corner.
Off the corner.
Off the elbow.
Right here?
Yeah.
That's gravel.
Okay. Where is the dust that they're talking about coming off of?
There really isn't. I mean, I live here, and I'd be the first one to throw a pick.
Jimmy, can you come back to the microphone so that people can hear you?
So.
You can say what you need to say, but just say it to the microphone.
Oh, yeah.
Stare at it, stare at it.
Just talk into the square, please.
Yeah, so there's really not a dust issue in that now.
Is your Association responsible for that rule?
Yeah. Yeah, so we do the snow removal, and then we do the gravel, the gravel replenishment, and take care of it and maintain it on a regular basis.
So if you get complaints from people that there's too much dust?
We don't. I mean, it's, the only people using it is the neighbors, so I was really surprised to hear that.
Okay. Is this a new building that you're constructing? New, is it a pole building or a steel building?
It's a pole building.
Yeah.
Okay. You're gonna have a driveway coming off?
Yeah. Yeah, you'll see in one of the examples where the driveway is coming and meeting up to the gravel driveway. Yeah, but no, we don't have a lot of dust issues at all.
But if you did, would your Association take care of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Can I tell you, there's horses that walk up and down that gravel road every night. There's, I mean, it's an equestrian farm, just lessons and teaching out of it. Again, there's a lot of agriculture things happening out there, I guess.
Any other questions from the board members to the applicants? Okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this request? We'll see, none? Anyone in the audience want to oppose this request? You want to give your name, sir?
My name's Robert Ingram. I live at 3740 West 60th Street. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I need to preface my prepared statement in that it was my understanding that prior to the 2019 zoning rewrite, that farming was never allowed in an R1 zoning district, and I don't understand how this became illegal, non-conforming under that condition, but I'll leave that up to you to research. But I'll go on and read my statement. However, just be aware that it was my understanding that that was an illegal use. I've lived on West 60th for about 25 years, have become friends with all the farm and farm owners and operators around the property, including Randy and Ricky Kay, Kevin Cunnell and Steve Johnson. The issue I spoke of initially was, we had a very similar situation on the south side of 60th at the east end of the development, where Ricky Kai wanted to entertain the sale of a piece of his farmland to a personal friend of his, but the sale hinged on being able to erect a 33 by 50 or 1,650-square-foot structure to be able to house his collector cars, and it would require the same basic hardship variance as the petitioner is currently requesting. At that time, the ZBA Commission agreed with staff's recommendation for a denial. Because of that, I hate to say it, the land sale obviously fell through, but it also created a hardship between myself and Mr. Kai, who eventually worked it out after I explained to him my concerns. Initially, after reviewing the documents, including their HOA agreement for this property, I'm a little bit confused as to why we're even here tonight for a few reasons. The petitioner stated in their application that the HOA prohibits-
The petitioner stated in their application that the HOA prohibits storage of equipment outside of a building, but yet they seem to disregard other items in the HOA listed, that have got listed below. There's also a statement by the petitioner that they're taking over the land that's currently grow crop to continue that operation, which he's confirmed tonight and I don't deny. Um, in the HOA agreement, agreement, there's a statement in Article Six, Section One that states, "No lot shall be used except for residential purposes." In that same section, paragraph four states, "No crops may be grown for commercial purposes within the Henry Heights Agreement." In the same article, Section Two, paragraph four states that "All dwelling units shall have an attached or a detached garage for at least two cars but not to exceed four." As the house already has a two or two-and-a-half car garage, I'm confused as to whether there's a waiver by the HOA to exempt for this pole billing. Now I realize that Danport doesn't U.P. open nor does the city get involved with HOA agreements, so I'll go on to mention concerns in regard to the city's, uh, zoning. Uh, the petitioner is asking to build a 40 by 64 pole barn, which equates to 2,560 square feet, which is 64% larger than the building that was proposed to be, uh, built on the south side of 60th and denied by the ZBA in the previous petition I spoke of earlier. My additional current concern is if this ZBA were to approve this petition, what would stop them from denying a similar building? Let's say in a subdivision in Danport that has some million-dollar homes with large lots so that their children could, uh, maybe be entertained inside of a, uh, let's just say a small basketball court, volleyball court, tennis court? Uh, you know, I've seen where people like to spend money for, uh, their children's goals and aspirations and I would think that if, uh, the ZBA approved this scenario in an R1 zoning that they'd have a hard time denying it elsewhere in the city. City has stated in, uh, that the structure exceeds a, uh, potential allowable square footage by over 50%, which could imply that maybe a smaller building could be allowed. And again, I'm concerned that this would, uh, violate the HOA agreement. Petitioner has stated that he needs to maintain the yard and needs space to store equipment to do so. Find it hard to believe that the petitioner, who owns all-around town landscaping, and even today I witnessed two of his trucks and trailers parked on 60th with several workers mowing and maintaining the yard. As a matter of fact, I can't say that I've ever seen the petitioner actually doing the maintenance himself, but regularly see his company, regularly see his company trucks and employment, employees on site. I have no idea what this petitioner really wants the building for, but he's clarified that tonight, but believes it's not, uh, for maintenance, yard maintenance equipment. I personally feel that this really is not a hardship request 'cause this very building could probably be built on the business's 1.8-acre property at 4401 Locust Street instead. But hearing the petitioner tonight claiming that he wants it for grow crops, uh, I understand why he probably wouldn't wanna do that either. To me, I personally feel this is a change of use as opposed to a hardship, which, uh, is just being disguised as a hardship variance, uh, of which I don't think your board has the ability to rule on. Uh, I truly, uh, trust that the commission will follow city staff's recommendation for denial and not set a bad precedent that they may regret, regret for other R1 properties within the great city of Danport. Thank you for your time and volunteering for this commission.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience opposed to this request? Advocate, you got any final, uh, comments?
No, 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 you're on.
Okay, okay. Um, we have any, uh, board discussion? Okay. Um, can I get a motion for approval?
Um, I'll move to approve HV21-03.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, I guess we gotta get a roll call from Laura.
That's correct. Boyd Carlson?
No.
Darlin?
No.
Leva?
No.
Rice Dropper?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, that is a three no's and an abstention, the motion fails.
Okay, new business. Request SU21-05 of Kevin, here we go with names again, Kevin Koner, on behalf of Elmore Storage LLC at 6403 Elmore Avenue for a special use for an outdoor storage facility being a continuation of an existing use located on the C3 property. Table 17.08.1 requires a special use for an outdoor storage facility on a property zone C3 general commercial district. Staff, do you have your recommendations?
Sure, this is a 13-acre property. Um, it's located between Elmore Avenue to the west and the interstate to the east and then south of Veterans Memorial Parkway. And then just south to the site is the Walmart Shopping Center. Uh, so a little bit of history on this site. The site was developed in 2015 under an old zoning code, which allowed for self-storage. So the southern portion of the property was developed and then the northern portion was planned as a second phase of development and was prepared for that use to continue at a later date. Um, in 2019, the city rezoned this portion of the city to Elmore Corners Commercial District. The, this commercial district did not allow for self-storage, so made the site a non-conforming use. However, the applicant has petitioned to rezone the property to C3 general commercial and that was approved by the city council just last week. So the C3 district allows for self-storage as a special use, which brings the applicant here today.
I'm, excuse me for a minute, Matt. I apologize, is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, okay. Excuse me.
Um, so up on the screen, we have the old zoning map, which hasn't been updated yet, but the subject property is highlighted. Um, it's setback from Elmore Avenue and abuts the residential development. So it is a C3 zoning now. Um, so this just kind of outlines the background of the development. So the continuation of self-storage, um, requires a special use, so the applicant's requesting that the board accept the 2015 development plan. Um, in terms of public notices, a notice is published in the Quad City Times and then, uh, adjacent property owners within 200 feet were sent a public hearing notice. Uh, to date, status, staff has not received any written comments. Uh, we did get a phone call from a manager of the housing development. Uh, they were not opposed or in favor, just called for clarification on the project. Uh, so the findings, uh, the petitioner proposed, uh, location, design and construction will meet the special use requirements. The use is compatible with the adjacent land uses and the current first phase of development. Uh, security measures are in place that limit unwanted access to the site. And finally, the proposed special use is in accordance with the criteria for special use approval. Uh, so therefore, staff has recommended that the board adopt the findings and approve the special use, subject to the following conditions. Uh, one is that prior to occupancy, the pad site shall be enclosed with the same or similar style of fencing as the existing fencing of the first phase of self-storage. Two, that the new portion of the site have a restricted access in a similar manner as the area to the south. And then finally, uh, should complaints arise due to non-compliance of these conditions or any other code violations, a rehearing of the special use shall be scheduled per Danport Municipal Code, at which time the special use may be modified, re-approved or revoked.
Mr. Chairman, you got any questions? Got one. Matt, um, are they allowed to park RVs in these, uh, uh, storage units? Or are they self-contained storage units?
RV storage is allowed in outdoor self-storage. Um, we do have use standards that regulate them to be in the rear yard of a property and then they need to be, I believe, 25 feet from the lot line. So there is a buffer between RV storage and adjacent land uses.
I will state that the proposed site plan submitted by the petitioner does not have area available for RV storage. This is, the, the audience associated with this is more for construction contractors, um, and commercial storage more than on like RV or boats.
Okay. Will they have to come from, I'm sorry?
Oh, I just, what, what's considered the rear yard? When you said the storage would have to be in the rear yard, what part would be considered the rear?
So it would be the east lot line, so abutting the residential.
Oh, all the apartments, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Advocate, you wanna come up? No, I don't, is there any more questions for staff? Okay, advocate, you wanna come up and present your case?
Uh, my name's Kevin Kellner and I'm here to represent the owner of the property. Uh, we would be the contractor for the project and we did the first phase. Um, the only thing I wanted to point out, as Laura mentioned, um, we don't intend to do outside RV storage. If somebody wanted to rent one of the units, the units would be parked in a building. So in, in the future plans and development, just like in the south side, there's nothing left outside, it's all within a building.
Okay, that would bring up a question. If you're gonna park vehicles inside, um, then is there the requisite ventilation for flammable?
Yeah, everything we do is submitted to the building department.
Okay, so that's just part of our building code to cover that, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry. Gas inside buildings perk me up, so.
Any other questions from the, for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir. Does anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none.
I think everyone does.
Yeah, okay. Anyone in, speaking opposed of this request? Seeing none. Advocate, you got any final comments about this, uh, request?
No, I mean, really, we're just trying to finish what we started, so.
Okay. Um, any, uh, more discussion? See, it seems like my head's on a swivel. Can I ask for a motion?
I'll move to approve SU21-05 with the three conditions recommended by staff.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Need a roll call, Laura.
Leva?
Yes.
Darlin?
Yes.
Boyd Carlson?
Yes.
Rice Dropper?
Yes. Motion's been approved. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Um, well, with no other business, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're done.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody for coming.
Okay, so in two weeks, I'm gonna be out of town, but I'll try to call in. In four weeks, we'll go on the boat after the meeting.
All right.
Unless you got it sold.
I'd sell my boat.